Good evening and welcome to today's council work session for Monday, November 9th. We'll now call today's meeting to order. The first item for business is approval of the work session minutes from the last two council meetings. Beginning with the October 12th council meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I have some.
Moved by Councilmember Rout, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Lundie. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye." Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And we also held a work session last week, Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m. and would ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lundie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Are there any corrections or discussion about the minutes?
Mayor James.
Yes ma'am.
Yes. I had made a comment that I did not think that $10,000 was enough and that's not reflected in these minutes. So I would like to add that I thought that $20,000 was enough money to accommodate both disasters.
Yes, I do recall that. We can definitely make that correction. I do also recall, we said we would discuss it today because it is a financial matter. So let me double check, but I do believe it is reflected, yes, under financial business. So we'll actually do that vote in the council meeting, but if we could add that correction to the minutes, we'd be grateful.
Thank you.
So that was $20,000 and Councilmember Rout suggested.
I suggested $20,000.
Yes. And with the understanding that it wasn't necessarily for one emergency event, but we had two back-to-back and we don't know what the future holds for the rest of the fiscal year, so just to be able to accommodate any unforeseen emergencies in addition to what we have. But we'll say that this is not by any stretch of the imagination intended to address every single catastrophe. The town of Bladensburg leadership is just trying to do something to help residents who've been impacted here recently. Any other clarifications or edits?
I did drop one thing off the draft council meeting agenda under financial business for emergency budget ordinance, not knowing what the vote was going to be and is going to bring that back in the next meeting. Because I know it is going to be approved, increased, you know, so it's, um, so it can be approved, but then I'll bring that back to the next council meeting.
Okay. Great, thank you for that. So is there a motion to approve the minutes with that additional correction?
I have some move.
Moved by, oh, I'm sorry. We just did discussion, we had the motion, I apologize. I'll now call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye." Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Good evening, Councilmember Mendoza. So we just completed the approval of the work session minutes for the last two meetings. So you joined us at a good time. So with that, we'll move over to Acting Town Administrator, Mr. Tenelli regarding the residential emergency grant program.
Yes, as Councilmember Rout just commented on, and the minutes he just approved, we had a special work session on November 5th. And one of the things was to address the residential emergency repair grant program. I'm gonna come up with an acronym soon, so we don't have to, you know, so if anybody has any ideas.
Can we have a contest for who comes up with the acronym?
Yeah, I know, I know. And I have to go back and check it every time, because I forget, you know, I drop a word or, you know, flip it around. But bottom line is, we're trying to help the residents. And what we discussed at the work session, the changes in here are inclusive of everything that we discussed and also ran it by council. And our council came back with some additional changes as well. And I made sure to share the minutes with council and some discussions I think that are pertinent to what she should review on here, most notably about the code violations. I wrote a lot about the code violations and you might not see it in the minutes, because minutes are trying to capture like a summary, but I gave council more detailed explanation of everything that was discussed. And she came back with, with these suggested edits and changes. And we can just go through some of these real quick. I don't know how much time you want to spend on it, Mayor. I have, I have on here 15, 20 minutes.
Yeah, that sounds right, about 15 or so.
Okay. Okay, so this is a grant program. As you can see in the first paragraph, halfway down, it's emergency repair, that is required to remedy a situation that is life-threatening or jeopardize the health and safety of the applicant homeowner. That came up during discussion last week. That prohibits somebody from living in decent, safe, and sanitary conditions, which came up again from discussion last week. Second paragraph, the proposed grant funding has eligible uses of the grant funds. And let me back up a little bit. We modeled this after the town of Riverdale Park, but we fine-tuned this and made this, and tailored this more for Bladensburg. If anything, I think we strengthened it. Not that there's anything wrong with their grant program, but I just, you know, we, we do everything here, I mean, I think we do everything here better, but I mean, you know, not take away from what they did. But it gets into the eligible uses and can see on there what these are. And these include, I see from that paragraph there, HVAC equipment. We had residents when their homes flooded, a lot of the mechanical equipment downstairs, meaning your furnaces, hot water heaters, the HVAC, help me out, the, uh, yeah, the inside, you know, the heat pumps. Once they get water damaged, they have to be replaced. A lot of times it's not brand-new piece of equipment. It might be a 15, 20-year-old piece of equipment, and if insurance is going to cover it, if they ever would cover it, they might only cover it at the current value of it. That current value is not going anywhere near new value. Mold remediation, tree removal, anytime you have a sudden severe catastrophic event, the first thing that wants to fall down is a tree. And trees always find a way of not falling down in a vacant piece of lot. They always try to capture a piece of property along with them. Insurance deductibles, I put that in there because people sometimes have trouble meaning the insurance deductible, because it could be $500,000, $2,000. People just don't think about homeowners' insurance sometimes, and they're like, oh, you know, I could put $2,000 or $5,000 deductible on there. You have a $6,000 repair, you're out $5,000, you know, so I did add that in there. And also put some ineligible expenses. Oh, also in here is a short-term hotel stays, because people did get displaced. And you need funding, you know, to go somewhere. So now, this grant is only $1,000. I had in here written, as we talked about, and this is up for discussion, you know, there's only a starting point, $10,000 initial and transferred out of our town budget, meaning that it's going to come from the mayor and council, community events line item, because we're not doing events such as like the fireworks this year, so we're going to have some savings. Fireworks is a big-ticket event. So I was going to bring back a budget transfer from community events over into this line item. If it's $10,000, $5,000, $20,000, all depending on mayor and council discussion. So the individual award, which gets down into here, this paragraph here, you can see it up on the screen, for those of you in here and for those of you following at home, the maximum amount of the grant is $1,000 for each recipient, given on first-come, first-served basis and on a matching basis. Meaning that if you have $1,200 repairs, you can apply for $600. This way it shows that, you know, the residents are vested as well in making the repairs. And again, I have in here, so, I'm sorry, let me back up. So it's a 50% match. So it's going to cover up to, 50% up to $1,000 per grantee. And once the program is spent, the program is over for the fiscal year. So once a $10,000 or whatever amount is approved by mayor and council is expended, then the grant will cease for that fiscal year. And then we can talk about doing something again the next fiscal year. This is just to address concerns, events that happened so far this fiscal year and what may happen, because we're not even into winter time yet, or times of high winds or anything, solar flares, I don't know. So, let's see. The conditions of the application, I ran this by our council as well, with the concerns and discussions that we had on Thursday. They must be the primary owner of a single-family residence. And the applicant, and the applicant must match the state tax records under SDAT. And there's a link right there for, and I'll open up the State Department Assessments and Taxation website. They must occur with the local real estate taxes on the residence. And again, there is a quick lookup tool to go right into the Prince George's County Finance System to see if they are, if the property is delinquent or in a current status. They kind of summed, she kind of summed up everything with the code. Property must be in good standing with the town and county prior to event-causing damages. A little bit leeway there, case-by-case basis. If you have 10 applicants, we can kind of see who is in violation. Gross violation versus, I want to say, like a high-grass violation given out the day before. So this way, there is a little bit of judgment call there, based on, you know, the staff's best judgment. I thought just going to come back with a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less is easiest. So, and the remark was because of the size of the grant. And we know our residents and we know our properties. The repair work must be done by licensed contractor, appliances purchased must be new made through retail establishment, licensed contractor. That way you get a good invoice, bill, sale, work order, everything else. Again, this is a lot to go through for up to $1,000. I mean, if you think, what appliance is going to cost you $1,000? But we're trying to make this grant as transparent as possible and make sure that everybody's on the same page. So, let's see. So once the, this came up through discussion as well, repairs must be completed and properly documented for reimbursement within 90 days of grant award. So, and somewhere in here too, is the town will respond within 15 days of a grant application, which is also brought up in discussion as well. So, once a person applies, the town has to respond to the applicant within 15 days, if there's funds available. If there's no funds available, then let's tell them, no funds available. So then 15 days, the town has to respond back to the applicant. Once a grant award or a notice to proceed, approval letter written by the town to the homeowner is sent, the homeowner has 90 days to respond with documentation of the expenses they have out-of-pocket for reimbursement, up to 50%. And with some of the things going, it's not going to take long for, you know, you might have two or three. Yeah, but tree removals cost what, like $2,000 estimated, anywhere, I mean, they're...
They could be upwards of $15,000, $20,000.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, a new dishwasher is like $900 by itself. So it doesn't take much to get to that, that threshold, thank you. So, and this is, there it is, down here at the bottom, the town responded to probably fill that application or request additional information. And it goes into, into the applicant process. It's pretty simple application, three questions, you sign it, email it, mail it, drop it off the town hall. And I put Diane as her point of contact to drop this info off to, so they're proper tracking of everything. So that is everything that we discussed about Thursday, I believe, it captured all of that, and bring it back to you all for discussion.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Tenelli, for the overview and for walking us through the feedback from council, as well as the edits received from the mayor and council at the meeting last Thursday. One question is, I was wondering if we could just clarify 15 business days.
Mm-hmm.
Most people will assume, but it's just better to have it there, so people don't feel like if they're counting the weekends, they've missed that deadline.
Yeah, okay. Good idea.
And then, just a question regarding guidance from council. So one of the notes that we discussed last week was putting parameters on here, such as applicants can only apply once every few years, but I didn't see that language. Did I overlook it, or...
One second, I thought, I thought that...
Or did she say we had to...
Here, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me just see real quick. It's not there.
I didn't see it.
Oh, wait a minute.
But I could have missed it.
Now, hold on, let me see something, let me see something. Did not make this draft. Nope. Okay, I'll add that, yeah.
Thank you. And I'll just ask if there's any comments or questions from the council, Councilmember Lundie?
Yes. Thank you, um, not a mayor. Thank you, Vito. You took, you took some good notes and caught a lot of our comments. So I just have a few additional comments on, under the application process. I would like for us to submit application, can we move away from names and put titles?
Sure.
I would like to do that. Instead of saying, putting a person's name in case they're not here or what have you, let's just use their official, whatever that person's title would be, that position.
The email address will stay the same though, I believe.
Pardon me?
I think that...
And that's going to get into another comment.
Okay.
So, maybe you can put her title in there or something, put that title in there.
I think we have an administrator town email, I believe, I can send to that.
Because people may, you know, may not be here and you never know, it could happen. And another thing I think we talked about in the meeting that I don't see that it's reflected, is that everybody may not have a computer, so, or via email, by mail. Could it be, could the application be submitted via mail?
Oh, that's on here.
Yeah, I have that, I did add that on there.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
It's up here on the, if you look up on the screen, it'll be easier.
Councilmember, is that the very, very top of the...
Okay, so maybe we put it together or something.
Is it, in the application, that I need a mail?
Okay, so that's together.
But I'll change that to title.
Yep, okay. And...
Councilmember Lundie, can I ask you a follow-up question on the recommendation about the name? I'm just trying to understand.
Oh.
Do you think from a resident perspective, they might be apprehensive if they feel like it's going to a general inbox where it's not really attached to a person like Ms. Griffin? I know this goes to her versus, I don't know, I'm just asking. Sometimes people feel apprehensive, like, oh, it's just info at whatever, is anyone ever going to check it? Versus maybe if a person is attached to it, they may feel more compelled that, okay, it's going to be responded to?
I mean, I'm flexible in that right now.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we just, going forward in the future, as we get our technology together and have you, I think we need to consider titles, maybe put both, the title and the person's name, you know, just a suggestion. And then also, in the last sentence, the town will respond to your properly filled-out application or request additional information within 15 business days of receipt. Based on what you said, Vito, can we add pending availability of funds?
Sure.
To be, as the mayor said in another comment, just to be more concise.
Of course.
Pending availability of funds. And that's all the comments I have. It was a great job, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lundie. Any other comments or questions from the team? Councilmember Rout?
Yes, thank you, Acting Town Administrator, Tenelli. I do think that in the work session, we also discussed a ranking process as it relates to judgment. So let's say, for instance, we do say that the cap is $10,000 and we receive 14 applications and they're all valid, what's going to delineate one, you know, catastrophe versus another catastrophe? So I really do think that a ranking process, whether it's a, you know, a scale as it relates to the health, wealth, what did we say? Living in decent, safe, and sanitary conditions. For example, if we do have, let's say, a cancer survivor living in a lot of mold versus someone that tree fell down on a property, in my professional opinion, I would think that the person that is of a higher risk with their health and the mold and living in that would, should be granted that rather than the person with the tree. And so I would like for us to consider a ranking process. In addition, I would like us also to consider increasing the amount, as I stated before in the work session, that we had 15 residents affected from the September 10th flood. Of the 15, 14 residents are still in need of some type of assistance, remediation, or anything. There have been denials from, from their homeowner's insurance. And then on top of those 14 individuals and families that are affected, we also had another tragic incident in Ward 1 on Newton Street. And so that's over 30 individuals that could qualify for this. We all know the state of the earth right now, it's just, we're having 100-year storms, maybe one, once or twice a year. So I would like to us to consider $10,000 possibly from the mayor and council and $10,000 somewhere in the budget for a total cap of $20,000. I'll get back.
Thank you. And again, we'll get into the amount, because that is a financial matter in the council meeting to take that vote. But I do agree and recall that we discussed that concern of $10,000 before being enough. And again, we know we can't continue to just up it and up it, but given recent tragedies that we've had to face unexpectedly, it just seems like a better fit for what we're trying to accomplish to support the residents. But any last call for comments or questions? Okay, so for financial business, I'll just make a note. We will be asking for approval of the emergency grant program, and then also we'll be asking for a motion to, wait, Vito, this is an emergency budget ordinance, so...
I'm not waiting for this, I mean, we go ahead and approve the grant funding now, or that tonight's meeting, and we can start spending it now, I'll come back next month with an emergency budget ordinance.
And do the adjustment, okay. But I still...
Assuming on good faith that emergency budget ordinance will pass.
Yes.
Okay.
And not just that, but we'll clarify when calling for the vote that the amount is $20,000 and not 10, as in the draft.
It takes a little bit to write one of those up, so...
Yeah, yeah. And you have to run it through legal as well, so...
Yeah, yep.
Great, thank you so much. All right, getting back track here. So the next item is still in your camp, Mr. Tenelli, the CARES Act funding.
Okay. Let me bring this up real quick. Last fiscal year, last May, we were, okay, I'm gonna go through some attachments here and I just have the important parts highlighted. They're part of larger grant documents, budgets, and everything else, but for time's sake, I just have the highlighted items up on here. The Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act. Prince George's County was awarded $15 million back in April or May and to give out to the 27 municipalities. And Bladensburg was awarded $575,000 for expenditures from March 1st through December 30th or 31st of this year, of this calendar year. You'll hear a lot of people talking about CARES Act funding, it's all, it's all the same pie that everybody's talking about. You'll hear fed, state, and local resources. It's still being defined, I think, with only 60 days left in the process. It's pretty firmed up right now. There was a set of guidelines put out, and then there were firmed-up guidelines, I guess, because there was a lot of questions. So what happens is, the town submitted a plan to send to the county. The town was already awarded the funds. It's kind of a backwards process. You're notified of the grant award, and then you have to go back and almost like apply for the funds. So what did, so some of the things that the grant covers and the highlighted items are, and this is from the Department of Treasury, some of the highlighted items of allowable expenses include necessary expenses due to public health emergency, that is our public safety department. And you can see on here for the period from March 1st through December 30th. Okay, so what are the eligible expenses? Medical transportation related to COVID-19, and I'll touch on that in a minute. Expenses for communications equipment, expenses for medical and protective supplies, PPE, which is personal protective equipment that you always hear about, and sanitizing products, cleaning out facilities, that's this item, and payroll expenses for public safety. And that was a frequently asked question that got firmed up as well. Expenses for food delivery, which we applied for as well. Expenses to improve telework capabilities for public employees to promote social distancing and teleworking. So those are the allowable expenses. I'm getting, I'm getting down to what Bladensburg applied for. I'm just setting the table right now. So one of the frequently asked questions was hazard pay. At the end of March, I think it was on March 31st, when the governor declared, I want to say the shutdown, closed down, I don't know the best...
Stay-at-home orders.
Stay-at-home order, thank you, okay. Town Bladensburg did a stay-at-home order from March 31st through June 30th. And what happens is, all of us can't shut down. Public safety and public works are still, public safety is a 24-hour operation, public works is, I won't say 24-hour on-call, even though they're 40 hours a week, they're always on-call for any, we call it public health, or, help me out, you know, so. So hazard payments included the overtime. Once we went into hazard pay scenario, we pulled around to see what our jurisdictions are doing around the state and the county. They all went strictly to overtime basis. So for anybody that came in and worked their shifts, was paid as strictly overtime basis. The CARES Act funded that, because it was a new expense. At that point, only new expenses were allowed in the budget. So the hazard pay, the new expense of the overtime differential, plus your FICA taxes is what is an allowable expense. And that just went for public safety and public health. What they excluded, and I appealed, which, April, June, four times, was code enforcement. They denied code enforcement overtime, even though I said code enforcement is a unit of public safety. They work hand-in-hand with public safety and public works, and they backfill for both those departments, and they complement each other, and they're always there, you know, and I mean, they're there, I gave examples, I even sent pictures of code out there with the, with the food distributions. Still got denied, so. Funding I thought we could apply there, we did not get. But that's okay, because it could fund other areas of the budget. Now, what did Bladensburg apply for? That's a burning question, I know. That's a burning question, I know. Hamster's on the wheel turning. There we go. Okay, so Bladensburg applied for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for hazard pay for public safety and public works. And this included everyone, everyone in public safety excluding the chief of police and code enforcement. And this was through June thirtieth. One of the things, um, I spoke to them last month, what is an allowable expense is current public safety salaries from, for this fiscal year. So that, that was an added benefit for, I think, because municipalities are already having stretched budgets right now because they're starting to feel the pinch now with shortfalls in revenues. So before, when this grant first came out, it couldn't be, it couldn't, help me out the, it's your plant, um, help me out that.
Subway.
Yeah. It couldn't fund things that are already in the budget. They loosened that up and finally said, what can we use these funds for? Because I, I was making applications for, what, what we found out with the flooding, let me back up a little bit, what we found out with the flooding and the incident we had in Newton Street that council member Rout talked about with the car impacting the building, we need some additional equipment in public safety. But we, we really need, especially as the days are getting shorter, are light towers, portable light towers. If you ever see a fire department vehicle pull up in the nighttime for a, uh, murder vehicle crash, you see them have the lights on the roadway as well. The portable light tower is a portable diesel-powered, uh, light system that would illuminate a large area. And we really need that and we see the, the need for that. And I even talked to some other jurisdictions who did get equipment similar to that as well, but Prince George's County, because it's going through the county, they make their own determination. Um, it was, that was denied and we also asked for a portable generator for the same issue responding to public safety and health emergencies. Um, one of the things that we're worried about is, you know, if, if things get really bad, we had to set up our own, say, triage unit outside a apartment building or senior center. We had to have the capabilities to do that. We got denied those requests, but I still think we need that equipment. So depending on how funding is this year, where, where the budget ends up, I think we may want to go ahead and purchase those items. They're only twenty thousand dollars each. I mean, they're not like very high ticket items, you're talking, you know, forty thousand dollars, but we're hoping that it'll qualify under the CARES funding. Some places, other counties or states, it might, but, you know, for this purpose it didn't. But anyway, let's talk about the good things that it, it did fund right now. It covers the FICA for the payroll that we applied for in the public safety. So for five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant, almost four hundred thousand dollars or close to three quarters of it, is that right? Two quarters, two thirds, somewhere close around there, ballpark, is going towards salaries and salaries over, mostly overtime and FICA taxes. Which is, again, from our budget, it follows, our budget is about eighty percent of our budget is for personnel cost. So I was trying to mimic, you know, try and follow the same roadmap with our budget because we had to submit our budget along with requests, so it's easily justifiable. So now let's get into some other things. Personal protective equipment, um, Tyvek suits, goggles, face shields, we asked for funding for that. Outreach efforts. We did send two postcards when the virus, when the pandemic first started back in March to residents as we were finding out information. We did two mailings to residents, um, about the pandemic, where to find resources, and that was a approved funding amount. One of the things that it, it also funds is our Blackboard Connect System, which is a reverse, someone called a reverse nine-one, nine-one-one system. It's a message notification system to our residents, you know, hey, there's, Fifty-Eighth Avenue is closed down due to something. So, and it could, it could target certain residents and say just in Ward one, Ward two. You can tailor it any way you want. I did find out it is multi, it supports multi languages, yes. Yeah, I did find that out after we talked. Food distribution, um, we, we did two food distributions back in April. Um, we, we did protein packs, I want to say it's close to about five thousand dollars. And right now we have a, um, a Thanksgiving turkey giveaway coming up, I think in an amount of seventy-five hundred dollars, which will leave a little bit amount left over for Christmas, but depending on where other things fall within the budget, I may be able to move underspent items over into food distribution as we get closer. Sanitation disinfectant of all town facilities. I originally had thirty thousand dollars because we thought we were going to do this every week. Um, that budget would be quickly spent. We did do one or two deep cleanings, but I reduced this a lot because Purnell Hall, our public works supervisor, um, found the same machine that was being used, that's used to sanitize all the facilities. It's a electromagnetic sprayer that vaporizes the clean solution. It's a non-toxic clean solution, I want to say it's like, um, lemon grass oil, I believe, or, um.
Hydrogen.
Thank you, yup. So when an area sprayed, um, it smells like somebody came through with Pine Sol. And it's non-toxic and it kills ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine percent of all germs. So we can do that ourselves. And, um, we, we do the vehicles, all the town facilities. We do it after, um, we'll do it here tomorrow morning after council meeting, like after Friday's, um, COVID testing, they came through and they sprayed all the areas of bathrooms, the kitchen, um, all the hard surfaces, the doors, light switches, everything, and just spray everything because it, it just goes out in the mist. So anyway, we bought the equipment ourselves, so we could, um, repurpose that elsewhere. The laptops and office software and laptops setup and installation are bringing that quote, was an invoice now, to, um, to mayor and council. This was to promote telework capabilities, meaning that we have to get geared up because I think, you know, our agenda kept building and changing, we're trying to get a lot done here pretty quick and I think everybody knows why, because I think everybody's staring down, we're going to get shut down again. So I feel like, I think everybody feels they're trying to get as much done as possible to get all the tools in place right now, so it's, um, and this is part of it. And the governor already, is already promoting, again, teleworking. So he's setting, I think he's saying that wheels in motion right now. The county has been, I believe, is still, uh, council member does, are they still teleworking for the most part?
Everything, all the offices are closed.
Yeah, and the state is the same way. Um, so I just, I, I figure everybody sees where it's going, so we have to get everything in place right now. And there's also new switches there, which is our hardware to run our, um, our data services. Let's get to the fun stuff. Um, all of it's fun. The capital items, communications, um, have in here a new phone system. The phones, the two phone quotes I'm bringing to you tonight are the same quotes I brought to you last month. I didn't have any luck finding additional vendor that is backing up a nine-one-one system, unfortunately, in the timeframe. So I still have the same two quotes I'm bringing to the mayor and council. And this would cover the first year cost, and I verified this with the grant, well, with the county. Our first year cost, because you have, with the phone system, and I'll get to it when we get to the, um, financial part, there is a first year cost and then there's monthly cost. And this would, would cover that. And it's all through the CARES funding because it's promoting teleworking and communications. And the final thing is an ambulance cabin chassis for the Bladensburg Volunteer Fire Department. What's nice about what we can do with our funding is, um, I think we're probably one of the only jurisdictions, I want to say, that brought in an additional, um, partner, and that is our Bladensburg Volunteer Fire Department next door. The cabin chassis is the, is the, um, it, it's just the, it, it's for new ambulance, but it's just the cab part and the rails and tires, if you, you want to think about that. And then they come through and they put a box on top. Well, the box on top is probably about twice the cost of the cabin chassis. But at least we can supply this to Bladensburg Volunteer Fire Department to replace our aging, how old is that ambulance now? Yeah, it's always on the road and it's, they're dire and even afraid. And they serve our residents, they, they serve the, the community. It's not like a, I mean, I, I, I mean, we thought this is a very good thing to do for them, um, because, I mean, we, I won't say we live and work right next to, um, the firehouse and we here go out multiple times a day. So I'm bringing those quotes to mayor and council. So in summary, finally, right? So in summary, there's where our funds are going. Let me open this up a little more, sorry. So you can see, um, the salaries and fringes are almost four hundred thousand dollars. We have operating expenses, what we talked about, the PPE, the food assistance, cleaning, information technology components, which are laptops. Um, that wasn't a capital outlay because they're individual units. It's not like a large, even though it's a large purchase, it's, it's based on individual units, it's almost like individual unit pricing. The public outreach was the Blackboard Connect System and the postcards. And the actual capital items are the phone system and the ambulance chassis for the fire department next door. So total is five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Half of this was realized back in June thirtieth, uh, be, because it was offsetting expenses back in June thirtieth, um, for last fiscal year. So we still have, um, two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to report that we spent by December thirty-first. But the public safety payroll and, and some of the other purchases, if approved, we'll take care of most of that. So I just wanted to give you all an update because everyone hears about the CARES Act, you know, where, where's the money coming from or how are we purchasing this? So this is, um, this is it in a nutshell. And I haven't heard anything about renewing the CARES Act or extending it so far with the election, I have no idea where it is. But, so we're just working on off of the current grant documentation right now.
Great, thank you, Mr. Tenelli, for walking us through the COVID relief funding spending plan. Are there any questions or comments from the council or staff? Council member Rout?
Yes, thank you, Acting Town Administrator Tenelli. I do have a question as it relates to the laptops. Um, you're saying that the laptops, um, are used to promote telework. And, um, to my recollection, we do not have sixteen administrative staff. Um, so can you, can you elaborate more on the laptop distribution?
Um, they went to administrative staff and also to the command staff of the, help me out, chief.
They went through to the, the mayor and council, they went through the, all the, the cat team members having, our, uh, marketing specialist, uh, Ms. Courtney Brooks, uh, Purnell, because they've been working from home as well, so we ordered for him a tough, rugged book that if he had to go out, he can do what he needed to do, projects or what have you. So they went to the key central people. The chief executive assistant has one, uh, the, the dispatch supervisor has one, so that they, she can work in remote end. Uh, we had IT set them up where they could DP in and work from home. So when we go back, if we go back to a shutdown, all the key central supervisors, uh, and components will have capability to still take care of it, like the cat team doing outreach services and things like that. They will have, uh, the essential tools to get it done.
And also too, I think Diane, town clerk.
The, the front office.
That's what I said, everybody on this side, uh, the clerk, uh, front desk, um, Vito, uh, code enforcement. So like I said, just all the key, uh, employees that we can still, if we had to work off-site, we still had the essential tools and capability to keep the city, the, the town running.
I appreciate that. Um, I just think that, uh, you can include the mayor and council because we have our own laptop line item, um, that the mayor and council's laptop should have take, been taken from that line item. So, I mean, the sixteen laptops, I mean, it's great that people.
I may be incorrect.
Okay.
Because I work juris separately, remember, that, that went that first.
I don't know, I don't know where it came from. I just know it took a while.
Oh, that's why, yeah.
I know it took a long time. And I do know that there has been many, many questions of the mayor and council as it relates to, um, you know, the laptops. And so I just wanted some clarity on the sixteen laptops. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member Rout, and thank you for the breakdown and, um, just clarifying who the laptops went to. Frankly, if it helps our budget with pulling that money from the grant, not knowing where we're going to end up over the coming fiscal year because we see numbers climbing and knowing that the deadline for the grant is approaching, I would recommend to staff that you keep that, um, under the, the CARES Act if possible. If it isn't, then so be it. But we just don't know what we're going to expect. Our property values that we're anticipating for real estate taxes could be impacted, we just don't know. So if that helps pulling that funding, since we have to get everything in, I think by, what is it, December fifteenth or eighteenth, we need to go ahead and expedite getting that documentation in for expenses that we've already paid for. And if that money, as you suggested, council member in the, um, budget line item can be shifted to another, um, necessity, that, that would be another, uh, opportunity as well. But I want to hear from other council members if there are any comments or questions.
The sixteen, um, you say sixteen computers that you purchased for the, for the staff? You have, I guess Vito will have a list of who those computers went to.
I have the breakdown.
Who they went to?
Yes, I have the, the breakdown for them.
Because I think ours, I thought ours came out of the census money. So that's what I guess we, we're trying to figure out, our computers.
I, I, I don't think your computers came out of these. I know they didn't, because you're right, they, they did come out of the census.
Right, our, right, that's what I thought, so the sixteen, I mean, I guess we're trying to figure out where the, where the computers went, which is fine. I mean, you pull money from a grant, that's what you do. But to make sure that you're not over buying computers and where these computers are going, just making sure that everything is, you know, laid out on the table.
So, uh, I can provide the list.
I think that'd be nice.
I can send it up to town administrator.
I think that'd be nice.
We'll give you all a roster.
And council member Blant, thank you for mentioning that, because I know we got two or three census computer, two census computers. I think one, was it overheating, something? Yeah, so that's not even in use. So that leaves one other, which is that one. So that, that's where those two census computers are. I don't know, I'm assuming we can send back the one that wasn't working and repurpose that for staff, but, uh, yeah, I appreciate you bringing up the census computers, because that was an original discussion to say, once the census is over, we can repurpose them. But if you have something overheating, it can't, that's just not realistic, so.
At least if it's noted that this was happening, you're just not purchasing computers and where all these computers are going to.
Yeah.
It'd be a misuse of money.
That's right, thank you. Uh, council member Lundie?
Thank you, um, Vito. I get so many titles, I can't keep up. I can't keep up. I told you I'm undercover.
It's going to be those calling.
Okay, so, um, the invoices for the vendors, like our, um, our ice cream vendor and our pizza vendor, have you received those invoices?
Yes, for the.
And how much was all that total?
For the census grant, um, the ice cream vendor was five hundred dollars and the pizza vendor was one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'm sorry, council member Lundie, we're still on the, um, the CARES Act funding. Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Is there any other questions regarding the CARES Act funding? Is there any other questions regarding the CARES Act funding for Mr. Tenelli?
I have the answer.
It's okay. Thank you.
He had the answer.
Gotcha.
I can have, I can have one then. I need a food assistant. Because we, a lot of food was donated to us, so it, so this.
Yeah, that, that's a good question. Um, when we first wrote the grant, we didn't have the food programs yet. I think we were just, everybody was scrambling. Everybody was scrambling hard. Um, I think you all got the ones from, uh, World Kitchen, the hot meals donated, and then that started off with the, um.
Go back.
Yeah.
Capital, uh, yeah, no?
Yes.
Oh, that was free. Oh, that was food.
Yeah.
We have paper.
Mayor, what's that called again? It's escaping my, um.
Yeah, it's the.
Yes, the shared food network, the weekly food distributions, they are at no cost to the town, um, which is great. I mean, it's a great resource. And now there's a lot of food resources because people have been laid off, out of work. But when this first happened, um, we paid for the first two food distributions. And I think, I want to say there's 165 protein meal.
So if I'm not mistaken, that was about $5,000 because we did it twice in the spring. And we timed it.
$1750 for each one.
Exactly. Because I think, that, that sounds about right.
We took that money from our, from our funding, our own personal, um, program, but mayor's budget.
I didn't have to because I could pull it from here.
So you, so you never took money from that?
No.
No, because.
Yeah, that was the original plan. You're right. But remember when we first started with COVID in mid-March?
That was April, I mean, five percent from May.
The grant, the grant process came along a few months later. So once the, the grant process, the, the information about what was accepted, expenses and what weren't, we were able to make different judgment calls on the allocation of resources.
Anywhere, so I wouldn't have known.
I think we did have that discussion in a prior council meeting because we were all talking through this. And we even had separate, um, the separate COVID-related work session with the council.
Any other, of the town's funding for, for any food during the COVID?
To my knowledge, no, not for share.
Because I thought you was going to use the shared food. The shared food was, because we, 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 I think we voted on using money, I think Jocelyn bought it up, using fund for.
I think she said up to like $10,000.
It was, it was money from, it was only money from the program. Yeah.
So what we did was, um, two packages of protein, um, and that was $5,000 each. Um, so based on this, it says food assistance was $14,950. So I do remember $10,000, but I don't remember the additional $4,950.
Incorrect. And what Mr. Tenelli is saying is in addition to the care, the share program, we also are partnering with Victory, I'm sorry, Shine CDC for the turkey giveaway that's coming up on Friday. So 7,500 of this is to go toward that event. So that's an invoice that we are looking, you know, to use those resources for as well. So that's separate.
Why were, what did you, it was free last year, right? Or, I'm, I'm not, I'm, yeah, it was free. Normally that food is free. I'm trying to figure out why we're purchasing food that's normally come.
The, so they actually pay for those. And correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Lundie, but my understanding is they do have to pay for the items that they provide. They've been doing this turkey distribution with the town of Bladensburg for about six years now. And in the past, we just have supported with, with volunteers. But because of the grant program, and we had agreed to allocate money for food assistance, it made sense to reach out and see if this could help them. Because we know nonprofits are hurting, they're not getting donations the way that they are due to COVID. And so it was an opportunity to partner with them. And again, this is for 500 Bladensburg families. So that's a cost of about $15 per family.
I mean, I didn't know you all was going to, I mean, do, it's like, when were you going to know that this was happening? It's just like, we, it's in the budget, but it's in the budget. And no one knew it was going in the budget that it was helping an organization that normally withstands self-defense free donation. So that's all I'm asking, just to clear it up. That's all.
I mean, it's great to partner, but.
I mean, I'm just saying it's great to partner, though.
Great. Councilmember Lund, I'm sorry, now Lundie, Councilmember Rout, sorry.
Yes, Mayor James, um, I too, um, I do echo what Councilmember Blunt was saying because there are a lot of free turkey programs that's going on in the county as well. I know, um, there's the Stuffer Truck Event, um, sponsored by County Exec also Brooks. I'm sure we could reach out to the community liaison and try to partner. And I think that, um, we should talk about partnerships that are going to cost money prior to just presenting a budget. I yield back.
Thank you so much. Again, this is a, an existing relationship. And so I'll take the sword or fall on the sword on this one for not coming to you all and updating you. But Councilmember Lundie knows, we have had this beautiful partnership with Shine for many years. And they do great work in our community. And as a result of having the grant funds, we were able to provide financial support. So, Councilmember Lundie?
Yeah, I, I do, um, I do echo, um, we've had this beautiful relationship with, um, CDC Shine. So I just wanted to ask for the record, did they request the fundings or did we offer?
In discussing this year's event.
Yeah.
And asking about the funding, I did inquire as to whether they needed support. Sometimes they do ask for, um, turkey donations and different things. So I did ask if they needed assistance. That was the conversation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor James.
Absolutely. At this time, the next item under the agenda is new business. So we're still with you, Mr. Tenelli.
Give me one second. Phone system purchase. Um, we talked about this last month. Um, contacted, contacted three vendors. Um, actually talked to a fourth vendor last week, but they only do analog systems via phone systems. And we wanted more of a digital system. Um, but three, we contacted three vendors and we got response from two of them. And we talked about the, the quotes vary. There's a, a lower one that's not as inclusive, meaning that, um, we're not sure if you can back up the 91, our 911 system. And we have another quote came in from Bay Telephone, which we talked about last month as well. It is a higher quote, but they know the system, they know the county's backbone. Um, our phone system is a little bit different, and this goes into laptop purchases as well. Our network architecture here, um, we're on the county's INet system. INet, I'm going to call, um, dark, it's dark fiber, meaning that it's just, um, it's a pipeline just for your county resources, I believe. Is that right, Chief? Correct. Um, it goes to county buildings. I'm not sure if it goes to the county schools as well. Um, I think it's just emergency operations. So, yeah, so that's why it's called dark fiber, meaning it's just dedicated for that. Meaning that it's not, it can't be tapped in for residential purposes. So with that dark fiber line with INet, it has its own specialized IP addresses and ports and everything that have to be opened up. And you have to know the, the programming for it. Um, the, and also going to a digital system, um, it has to work with our 911 center. Um, and not only that, but it has to have backup capabilities for our 91, our 911 system as well. So the quote was more, but I know they can offer it. And we really feel more comfortable with them because the installer, because a person that came here and quoted us the equipment is also the president of the company, is also the installer, and it's also local, um, tech support, meaning that he texts him, recall him if there's a problem. The other vendor we talked to, um, I think it turned Chief and I off quickly as it goes to a call center. Um, when we have 911 operations, um, we got to be back up and going. Um, so my, our recommendation is to go to Bay Telephone Systems. And what's nice about this, and you all may have this in your own work environments, but you've got to remember our telephone system was based back in the 90s, probably, 2000s. All the calls come in here and they get transferred everywhere. Um, it only works inside the building. Public Works is down the road here. We can't transfer calls to them. Um, the only way you can transfer calls across the street is through a physical phone line run across the street. That's how we transfer calls. Um, this is a, a virtual system, meaning that you can get calls, you know, at home, or Diane can get calls wherever she is and then transfer them out from wherever she is. Um, I think most places are on this kind of system now. We, we just are not. So, um, and also we have a lot of telephone lines that come through here. I call them pots lines, Plano Telephone Service, the old copper lines. We probably do away with a lot of these copper lines because we go into a virtual system that is completely backed up. Also, the phone vendor said, for some reason, INet goes down. There's a backup where it'll go back to our virus connection. So there's a backup to a backup, which is nice. Um, and it's just a flick of a switch. So we should always be on. And our phone system is aging and we're seeing the, um, I think it's gone down before. I want to, you know, yeah, you know, like to publicize that, but it's a fact, you know, it's, it's gone down a couple of times. Um, one of the things you may have seen is the 911 system has gone down, I think, like in Delaware, I believe, and Newcastle and counties and Lower Shore, I think. I think they're on a different, I won't say they're on like a Microsoft platform or something that we're not, that we will not be using. Um, so it's on a, it's on a dedicated phone platform versus more of like, I want to call it a Google Hangouts type thing or something. But it's, um, I don't know if you want to add anything, Chief, to it or not. I can take a break and you talk a little bit. Okay. So I'm going to bring that to the mayor and council for approval on our financial business.
So thank you, Mr. Tenelli. And so we will bring that up for a vote and have discussion on that in the council meeting. Put that aside for now. Um, the next item, we talked about laptops for purchases for teleworking. Is there anything there outside of the CARES funding?
Of course I want to add to it. I love talking. Um, we went through our current IT vendor. Um, the laptops specked out on here. They're close to about the same pricing. You can get online with Dell right now. I mean, Dell doesn't really do discounts with resellers. Um, I tried to go out and purchase laptops for a little bit cheaper. I purchased three, I think. Those are three, I think, I purchased for the mayor and council on the spec out. And, um, they did not work. And I had no technical, technical supporter backed up. I had to call the, you know, the Dell line. And they go through their full script of, is a machine turned on? Is a machine plugged in? Like, you know, just, just get the page seven of your script and, you know, let's get to. But, um, again, I stuck with that current, not stuck, but I stayed with that current IT vendor because they know our architecture. They know INet system. They know our server. They know, as Chief said, the, um, the VPN mapping. They know the employees and they warranty the machines. And it's about the same price. I could have purchased it myself. And includes all of that. And we also purchased Microsoft Office licenses. We did a volume purchasing agreement, which we did get a little bit of a discount and included in that quote. And it's also for shipping and, um, a little bit of money for installation. Installation meaning you got to wipe off, I call it the bloatware that comes with a new machine, download the updates, install the software, get it hooked up to our systems here, printers, scanners, VPNs, network shares, everything else. And they handle all that, which is great. And that is, and we will give you all a roster of where they went. There's some tough books that, as Chief said, that went to the people out in the field. Tough books are heavier duty versions of these and a rugged case. Um, I think, you know, drop proof, fall proof, rain resistant, help me out, Sean, everything, probably EMP proof.
It's more of a, more of a.
Yes.
Casey.
Mm-hmm.
They actually came in today.
Oh, good, good. Um, they're heavier, but they're built just to close it up and take out in field with you.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Tenelli?
Yes, I have a point. Yes, Acting Town Administrator, this is just for a point of reference. This was a reimbursable grant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And you have to get documentation, well, it's more reimbursable, you have to also show checks and clear checks and bank statements.
Got it.
So, again, it's, you know, it involved a lot more work than when, you know, that's, that's what it always is. But it's fine, it's fine. And actually, they have a third-party reimburse, reimbursement firm, I call it, it's a CPA firm, that we did a virtual walkthrough of our town accounting policies and systems and internal control procedures. Make sure that we are up and up. And I gave them examples and did a Zoom call and hubbub, you know, examples of everything. And they screenshotted and documented it. Um, and some copies of audits, um, council meeting minutes, everything else.
Great, thank you for that. And, uh, still sticking with you, the ambulance chassis for the volunteer fire department. Again, you covered it a bit already.
Mm-hmm. Um, we started out, okay, when we started this out, we talked to the Bladensburg Fire Department next door. They're working off a quote they received before. Um, we had strict purchasing requirements, um, you know, so especially for a high dollar amount like this. So they had two quotes and I, and I asked, well, it's for a Freightliner M106 cabin chassis. Is that right, Sean? It's still off the top of my head. Um, it's a heavy-duty truck. And Freightliner, so they got a quote from Dallas, Texas firm, from Baltimore Freightliner. And one is somebody else out of those areas. So there's one I know of over in, in East and on the Eastern Shore. Um, I think it's Delmar Truck Sales. They're a Freightliner dealer. And they also have the State of Delaware Freightliner contract because everybody purchases these cabinet chassis to make ambulances. So, and I asked them, you know, can you extend that pricing over to Bladensburg? Please help us, do us a solid. And they got approval. And we got State of Delaware contract pricing for the ambulance. So there's going to be some statements there in the budget, which I'm going to have to go back to the county to see if we can repurpose those funds elsewhere. So, and I'll bring that to the mayor and council for approval during the financial business piece of the council meeting.
Great. And just to just make sure, I know it's still Freightliner, but are friends at the fire department are comfortable with that bid and all the specs in there?
I used the same specs from the other two bids.
Okay.
And because they are specific to the ambulance chassis. And, um, and they recognized them as soon as they saw them. They said, oh, okay, it's for this size box. I'm like, okay, you know what I'm talking about. Um, but I think Chief Katz is coming here. Is that correct?
I believe Chief Sumner and President Katz may both be attending this.
Okay, are going to come here during the mayor and council meeting. If you don't mind, we normally don't take audience participation. But I want them to fill in some of the gaps here for you all.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Rout?
Yes, thank you, Mayor James. Acting Town Administrator, mayor and council, I am in agreement with this line item because originally there was, um, a $91,000 proposal. Um, and it looks like that the other two quotes came back low. And so I want to thank Councilmember Blunt for requesting additional quotations. And it looks like that we'll also receive an extended warranty and dealer installed options, um, in, as a total package. So I yield back.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. We'll move to the next item, which is the MagLIF position statement. Uh, we all received that, I guess it was over the weekend. And Councilmember Lundie had, um, responded with some recommendations. So I'll turn it over to you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor James. So I received a, well, a lot of the municipalities received an email from the legislative chair from, um, the Prince George County Municipal Association, which is Mayor, um, Mayor Barrett with green belt, um, informing us that Delegate Julian Ivy is sponsoring legislation, um, that would stop the MagLIF. And he wanted to get municipalities' positions on that and asked that the municipalities who would be participating would either submit a, um, a written, um, position on the MagLIF, or you could testify in person. And so there are more details to come about that. So that's all I have on that. So we needed to decide what our position is and what would be my approach. And my recommendation was, um, that we would submit a, um, position from the mayor and council. That would be my recommendation. Mayor James, thank you.
Great. Any further comments or questions about that? And, um, just briefly, though, we do have a position letter where the council voted previously.
Yeah.
Against that train. And so, to my knowledge, we are all still, um, operating under that. It is not. It is not good for our community nor Prince George's County. So I did dig up that letter, because I'm not sure if you have it, Mr. Tanelli. It's not in the final draft on letterhead, but the latest one I could find from Mrs. Sandlin, who helped us previously, drafted that. And it's the email where she shared it with the council. So if we have time in between, I'll forward that to you all, just as a starting point, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. But Councilmember Rowat?
Mayor James, you took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And just to be clear, because some people watching may not understand why this legislation is different. We, many of us have testified in Annapolis against the MAGLIF or written letters previously. This particular piece of legislation has to do with the siting of the MAGLIF. And so they're trying to fight it from the standpoint that within two miles of a residential area, a natural resource like the waterfront park, by Prince George's County law, that would not be an allowable use for siting permits for the MAGLIF. And so we've tried other avenues. Hopefully this one works, but I just feel like let's just do our part to see, you know, if we can really make an impact in this thing once and for all. So again, I'll share that at the break with everyone. The next item up on the agenda is the healthy food priority areas position. This was shared by, proposed legislation by Councilmember Mel Franklin. If you go to the information that he shared with Prince George's County residents, there's a link in the email where it shows you a map of the area. And so just as an example, if you look at the town of Bladensburg from 57th Avenue going over to the Parkway, that's an area that's flagged with no healthy food options. And so, in essence, and there's more to it, so please read it. But ultimately, this is saying that tax benefits would be given to grocers who provide healthy foods, healthy fresh produce and vegetables to residents in this, what is considered underserved population. And the way that they define it is by limited availability to fresh fruit, vegetables, and other healthy food options, a presence of significant number of share of low-income residents in the designated area, as well as a few other things. So if I'm not mistaken, this may be taken up as early as tomorrow. So would request a position letter for this piece of legislation, if we could vote on that in the upcoming council meeting as well. Any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Lundie?
Thank you, Mayor James. Yes, so when you open up the attachment, you see the list of stores. So where there, where there are some stores missing? Because I think in, in our ward, the grocery that's at the corner, right around the corner from the Emerson House, I didn't see that on the list. So how do we go about ensuring that all of our particular stores, grocery stores, if they have these three identifications here earmarked on that list, do we, who do we send that to? Do you know?
I would suggest reaching back out to Councilmember Franklin.
I think grocery stores in our county are defined, they have to do like a certain shortage.
Yeah, it's, they have the definition, and based on that definition, that corner store would qualify. It's considered a mom and pop store, and they have groceries in there. And they have, pardon? Right, so I just wanted to know how would we go about adding those that are missing to the list?
Yeah, I would recommend contacting Councilmember Franklin's office. Since he's the one pushing the legislation, he could probably give us the right guidance on that.
Okay.
Yeah. And if you could just share once you hear back, thank you. And then, oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Everywhere but to my left, Councilmember Rowat?
So yes, so convenience stores, so the, so I did do some research today. And the mom and pop store that is minority-owned in Ward Two is considered a convenience store. And so there is a difference push from the health department. They contacted us because two of our convenience stores were flagged on their list. And unfortunately, Acting Town Administrator and myself were not able to meet that meeting because we were dealing with the walkthrough as it relates to the September 10th flood. I do have the connection to the health department, because there are many convenience stores that do qualify in the town of Bladensburg, such as that mom and pop store, and there's others in my ward, Ward One, that would qualify for refrigeration, so that they can be considered, they can have the appropriate license per se from the health department. So without the appropriate refrigeration, they're not considered a grocery store. So there's clear delineation as it relates to a grocery store, a convenience store, and just like a regular store. So that is the difference. And so I am in favor of this piece of legislation, because the town of Bladensburg portions definitely is in a food desert. And I do think that healthy food options is owed to our town residents and businesses, and our frequent visitors. I would love to see, you know, something great like a mom's or something that's holistic in nature. So I am in favor of this piece of legislation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rowat. Yes, Councilmember Lundie?
Thank you, Mayor James. So if you wouldn't mind, I would want to work with you on that, and then we can get back to the whole mayor and council on that. Because I do know what the store I'm talking about, they do have the refrigeration, but as you spoke to about the licensing, because I've seen it, and they do have that. So they definitely, I would think would qualify.
My pleasure, and I think we should also include code enforcement as well.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. And the next item, Mango Cafe drain replacement?
This is a fun one.
Just keep in mind, it is 646, so.
Mango Cafe is a property the town owns that we acquired back in, I think that was 87?
No, I think it was 97.
97, okay. And it is an older building, well, it was an older building then, built in the 50s. Now it is an old building. And what they suffered there is a collapse in the exterior line leading from the business. Sean, I'm gonna have you fill in the gaps on this one.
What had happened was, it was an old cast iron pipe system in that facility. And over time, between roots and time, the pipe, the cast iron pipe just deteriorated to the point where it collapsed. It just rusted out. So it was causing actually sewage and other water to back up into the restaurant during use. So it was contacted, the owner, Kareem, contacted town of Bladensburg about the property to see if it would be okay to replace the system, and also to update the current grease trap at that location with PVC piping, which is work, which is much more durable and long-lasting compared to the previous cast iron pipes there. So it went from actually inside the kitchen area through one of the exterior walls and hooked up to the WSSC system, replacing all that piping going into the current, actually the current drainage system.
I don't think, we did the grease trapping, we just did the piping?
Okay.
Yeah, because the grease trap system, what they wanted to do was a lot of money. And as a owner, landlord, I mean, we're really responsible for that underground piping going from the building out. The same exact thing happened over here in 2016, I believe, at the police annex.
Yeah, at the annex, same thing. It was a cast iron system that rusted. It had some tree roots in there that basically collapsed the system, which was causing it to back up every time the toilet was flushed or somebody washed their hands. Or anytime, any type of water ran for a amount of time, it would back up into the building. So we had to replace that system also over in the annex.
Sean, didn't we have something similar to that back in those days where Mango Cafe with the pipe busted?
Yeah, it was...
Somewhere around there.
It was a different set. That was the bathroom side. This is the kitchen side. So, so now it's all been replaced with the cast iron, I'm sorry, with the PVC piping.
And it, and what happens with that is it's an excavation process through the wall, through the parking lot, and you have to replace it. It has to tie into the WSSC specs to tie in at the road. And since we are, at first, you know, we thought it was a minor repair, but old buildings, once you excavate, and you're all sudden like, oh, gosh, you know, so it's... And it's gonna be upwards of $14,000 to do the emergency replacement. I've been talking with Kareem, meeting with him, he sends me pictures, updates, vids, everything. And I asked him to oversee the project, and he's done this before. And he talked to people and got quotes, and he's like, you know, he finds that I just have to have somebody in here now, because the restaurant shut down, because it's an emergency. You can't have, as Sean said, water backing back up into a building.
And on additional note, every time that they would go through, and they would either snake the drain, or they, as they call hydrojet the drain, it would cause more damage to the drain. So it was time for replacement.
So have we made more than $14,000 for them to clean around?
I think he's bought that building 10 times over. No, I mean, I'm just, I'm joking, but I'm not. I mean, he's been a tenant there for, I want to say for 16 years.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah, and, and he has taken on that building and has done some amazing things with that building. I mean, he's, he spent a lot of money there with HVAC replacements, upgrades, roof replacement, repair, gutting the interior, upgrading the electrical system, so the HVAC, plumbing on the interior. He's done a lot there.
He's also been a valued partner with the town, too, for a lot of events and stuff like that, so.
And bottom line, it's our property, it's emergency repair. I mean, it's a back, it's a crushed, failed sewer line, so. We keep $50,000 in building repair and maintenance budget line item, and we don't have to use it. And we hadn't had to use all that money the last couple of years. But I keep, I keep that number high because of instances like this, because we have all old facilities. It doesn't take much for something like this to happen, so. I just want the mayor and council to be aware of that.
Great, thank you so much for that update, Mr. Tanelli. Any final questions regarding Mango Cafe? Great, thank you. So we've come to the end of the agenda, and want to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I still move.
So moved by Councilmember Mendoza. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rowat. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nay? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We adjourn.